Good evening, everyone. With the time being 6:00 p.m. on Tuesday, January 25th, 2022, I'll call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order and ask that we stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is the approval of the January 11th, 2022 minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve them.
So moved.
There's a motion in a second. Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
Number Allen Moffery?
Yes.
Yes.
Number Moore?
Yeah.
Yes, the motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Good evening, Dr. Goggin.
Hi, everyone. Nice to see you all. I will start with my personnel update. I would like to let you know that we have hired Keith Goodyear as a sped team chair over at Park Avenue Elementary School. We have received resignations from Terry Hensel, grade eight teacher over at the Webster Middle School. And I had a meeting with Chief Shaw and Tim Whiting. At the end of the year, our SRO is going to shift into different police work and Chief Shaw is in the midst of doing initial interviewing for a new school resource officer for the Webster Public Schools. We will participate in some interviews once some candidates have been selected. I wanted to also start by giving you just a clarification. I think there was some misinformation at the last meeting with regards to incidents in the schools. So I think it's important to clarify that. Every school has different reportable systems, but Bartlett has had, to date from the beginning of the year to January 21st, 48 reportable incidents to the state. At the last meeting, it was reported that there were 194 incidents. That number represents log entries in Power School, which includes all forms of communication to homes, such as phone calls, emails, and minor incidents like students leaving classes. Webster Middle School has had 50 reportable incidences to the state from the start of the year through January 12th. And at their last meeting, they reported there were 62 in December, and that was incorrect. Again, their log entries included teacher detentions, office detentions, warnings, and those types of things are not reported to the state. At Park Ave., they have had 11 reportable incidents to the state from the start of the school year to January 20th. And at the last meeting, it was reported that there were 24. And that number also represents their log entries, which are different than reportable incidents. So reportable incidents to the state include out-of-school suspensions, in-school suspensions, bullying, and emergency removals. So we've had multiple meetings as a district leadership team just with regards to collecting valid data. So we have also had some changes in our Power School systems with collecting that data. So there's been a little bit of confusion, and I think it was important to point that out.
Thank you, Dr. Goggin. So the incidents that were not reportable, are they still behavioral incidents that are happening somewhere in the school building?
Some of them are phone calls to parents. So every school does it a little differently. And so, you know, jump in administrators. So Bartlett High School uses log entries for anything. So if someone's calling home about something or a letter went home, it's logging any form of communication, so not necessarily a student discipline issue. The high school can speak to that if they want. I think the Webster Middle School uses log entries in conjunction with some of the discipline, like not reporting to class on time. And I think Park Ave. does the same. So administrators, do you want to jump in and?
So our incidents that not be reported, I'm sorry, might be like if a student got disruptive in a classroom and we just needed to, maybe an adjustment counselor went down and approached them and talked them through that, helped them to process. If I got involved or one of the other administrators, we would log it as an incident report just so that we have an ongoing, you know, data and documentation that if a child is struggling, so we can see trends and patterns, but those aren't reported to the state.
But still, sometimes instances of students struggling and maybe disrupting the learning that's going on and that kind of thing, which is significant, but not rising to the level of state reporting? Okay.
Yeah, it's a similar situation at the high school. Some of the incident reports are disruptive behavior in the classroom, skipping class, leaving class, things like that. But state is very specific on the type of data that it wants to collect. So some of the log entries may be a teacher contacting a parent as a result of one of those incidents, or it could be just updating on grades. Those are log entries as opposed to incidents.
Seems like a big discrepancy between, maybe not discrepancy, but a big difference between what's being reported to the state, which is, you know, reportable, and then other things that are happening that maybe are disruptions in the learning environment, but not, "I forgot my shorts and I have gym." Right? When that might be logged as a log entry?
Well, if the student did not participate in gym, then it might be logged as an incident. But if it was a consistent pattern of not being prepared or something like that, it might be a phone call home, email home, something like that. But we try to keep, document as many things as we can, obviously because of the earning credit situation in high school. So if a student fails gym and that's what's not going to allow them to graduate, we want to make sure that we have the steps documented all along the way.
That makes sense.
So I think one of the things that I want to stress is we used to collect data through the SWISS data collection at the elementary schools so we could actually look at those trends. What rises to the level of qualifying as an incident, even though it's not reportable to the state. And that SWISS data used to give graphs and charts and accurate portrayal of what's really going on. And tied with that SWISS data was the work that we want to do about creating positive learning environments with positive behavioral interventions. And then we made a collective decision a couple of years ago to move away from that SWISS data to use this new Power School module because it was a way to capture the state data. And then there've been some changes with that module that we purchased. So we're in a bumpy phase here. So actually, this Thursday, we have someone from the May Institute who works with us with positive behavioral incidents. We're meeting as a DLT to really look again at that SWISS data. What we need is a consistent way to manage what's happening in each of the schools. So we can't have one school using log entries for one thing and another school using log entries for another thing. We have to make sure when we say incidents that we're all speaking the same thing. So there's certainly room for improvement here, and I think we're working on that.
Yeah, I think it's also important to note which drove the change, which why we went completely to Power School log and incident entry is how the state is collecting data from us. We used to fill out a separate report that was uploaded to the state, and now they're taking information directly through our system, through SIFT as it's reported. So we have to keep the information, and we were trying to eliminate the double entry of using this other system that we were using. Last year, we had a plug-in for Power School. We could use it, but it doesn't talk to the state system. So they would have had to, administrators would have had to go into this one system, enter information there, and then go into another system and enter the same exact information there. And it was duplication of effort, which we were trying to not happen. You know, nobody has time for that. So this year, we started using Power School. And I think, you know, they're all using it similarly for reporting to the state. Everybody's putting in the state information that's reporting. And actually, I believe the middle school and high school are using the information in the same way as they enter it into Power School. So it's just, I think if everybody had something to say, they would say it's not the most user-friendly data to look at. You know, when you're looking for quick information on behavior patterns, student patterns, an example of that would be, and correct me if I'm wrong, a teacher has an incident in the class and fills out an incident report, and Power School will notify the administrator that there's an alert, there was an incident. So now the administrator goes in and pulls up that report and has to make it into another incident so it no longer ties that information to the teacher. Now, the administrator becomes the owner of that data. So the teacher can't follow through to see, right, what the administrator did. They don't have access to that, what the follow-up was. And now, if you wanted to go back and look at that data, you couldn't. You couldn't say, "Who made this recommendation?" If you were looking for patterns like, "Do I have a high number of students being sent out from one class?" Or, you know, "Are there patterns happening?" That's difficult to see. So now, I think the challenge for us is finding that system that kind of, we can accomplish both. We can do our state reporting, maybe something that can talk to our system, but also give administration the ease of something that they can use, you know, to benefit the PBIS work that's going on in the school.
So we may end up going back to two systems to collect the valid data because valid data is really important.
It is. I mean, it sounds like a real administrative burden, though, for sure, you know? It's too bad that there isn't one system that does it all. I know there is good work being done with the PBIS program, so it's nice to be able to take credit for that when you're, you know, looking at all of this data, for sure.
Anybody else have anything to say before I move on about it? Okay. I did want to give you an attendance overview. We have seen, it's certainly an increase in student absences and staff absences with the Omnicrom variant. I think the good news is, in the last couple of days, which is an INU report, we have seen a decline in student attendance, absences, and staff absences. So for example, on January 21st, there were 143 students absent at Park Avenue and 26 students. But on January 25th, there were 90 students absent and 16 students. And on January 25th, there were 60 students absent and 14 staff. So there's a decline, certainly. Similarly, at Webster Middle School, on January 21st, there were 113 students absent and 11 staff. On January 24th, there were 73 students absent and 12 staff. And on today, January 25th, there were 64 students absent and nine staff. And over at Bartlett, on January 21st, there were 110 students absent and 12 staff. On January 25th, 75 students absent and 10 staff. And today, 61 students absent and eight staff. So let's knock on wood that we're kind of seeing that decline is a good thing. And that leads me to, I'm going to just go out of order a little bit. With that decline, there was a SWICL meeting today, and I've invited Mr. Pronto here to share the good news about the changes that we are going to implement.
Dr. Goggin, Mr. Thomas was involved with the meeting today with the principals, and they decided unanimously that they were going to lift the restrictions of fans at the games because we were currently standing just with family or immediate family members only. So the ban has been lifted. That was what was put out in Facebook. I kind of put the quotes there. Ban has been lifted right now, so I think everyone was excited. We have a girls' game going on right now. The kids are back in the stands right now. So I think they're, like I said, trending in the right direction right now, and hopefully, we can get a little bit back to normalcy because at the beginning before, you know, the fans were all in attendance. The crowds were great. And then, obviously, with the variant coming through, we thought it was in the best interest to eliminate those fans. But now getting people back right now, we can see that things are trending in the right direction. They also lifted today through the MIAA, the sportsmanship ban. There was no shaking hands, which made no sense to me anyway because the kids are mugging each other out in the courts all the way through, and then we couldn't shake hands at the end. But they lifted that ban today as of about 4:00 today. So we'll be able to go through with the traditional handshake or fist bumps on the way through at the end of the game and show of good sportsmanship. Other than that, questions on sporting right now, too? Like I said, it's been very challenging this year, more than ever. Everyone thought last year's challenges were difficult. This has been 10 times more difficult this year, especially with so many kids out, as we saw the numbers right there, too. So every day, every week, has been a skeleton crew throughout our basketball programs and our track programs. But I think that we've done the best job we can to try to make some type of normalcy for a season for these kids right now. And we're seeing right now, other than injuries, that kids are coming back more than likely. Almost everyone has received the virus, and they've taken their two-week, I guess, penalty in a way through this right now. And people are coming back to full strength right now. We're looking forward to the stretch run for our basketball, boys' basketball program, as well as our girls' basketball, track programs.
That's great news.
Thank you, Mr. Pronto. I would like to let you know that we had a full-day professional development. You have the grids in your school committee packet. I want to toss it over to our curriculum director, Jill Chapdeline, to give a brief summary, and anybody else who wants to share about the hard work that our teachers and staff are doing.
So I just want to mention that PD is a very complex process. I'm sure you look at the grids. We do one for every single school. January 18th was no exception. We strive, as a district, to provide meaningful PD targeted to the needs of all of our staff, whether, you know, different grade levels, different content areas, different roles that they play. And this PD day, we worked very collaboratively as a central office team to make sure that we had targeted sessions for general education teachers, all staff members, but also very heavy emphasis on special education, very specific needs on special education programming, and also for our ELL teachers. And so I'll pass this over in just a second. I will keep this very brief, but I'll pass it over to Patty to say a word about ELL, and I'll pass it over to Kathy to say a word about special education. I picked a couple of sessions just to speak a little bit about. I was very pleased to see that we had staff members who stepped up to offer and present professional development. So I would like to acknowledge them for their hard work. It takes a lot to get up in front of your colleagues and run a session, and we have such talented staff. Jessica Barokas, Joni Verk, Sarah Argentieri, and Deborah Zablocki presented sessions that got rave reviews. So we always do PD feedback forms for everyone to fill out, surveys, and we got very high reviews for that. Bartlett, we had a student discourse PD so that teachers were given an opportunity to watch some videos and look at discourse being, you know, utilized successfully in the classroom. And so they learned a little bit more about how to implement that. We had a moving forward with the Innovation Pathways Program at Bartlett High School. That was a great opportunity to collaborate and talk about that program so that we could communicate to everyone what's going on there. They also had an increasing student autonomy accountability through UDL strategies, so lots of collaboration there. At the middle school, we had a four-step data discussion PD. We had a discourse and higher-order thinking professional development. We also had creating, engaging, and interactive lessons with Smart Board MX-75. You know, they all have new technology. And so they got to actually get online with experts and play around with that. We had a really engaging ST Math training session, and the very next day, our numbers went up. We had the most number of students utilizing ST Math at the middle school than we've had all year. They loved it, they understood it, and it's not interfering with tier-one instruction. They learned how to incorporate it very strategically, so that was exciting. We had iReady assessment training because we just had our second benchmark assessment, so teachers are delving into that. As an aside, we had a new teacher session today where we had teachers looking at the data. Someone came up to me and said, "I just want you to know," this is a new teacher, "I just want you to know that I've been in Webster for a short period of time, but I've had more PD than I just can ever remember, and really targeted and useful PD I can use the very next day." So that's really exciting. Our counselors had a very interesting PD. They worked on safety and risk assessments. They reviewed district protocols and procedures, and they had a hands-on session with their principals. And I want to thank the principals for being so engaged in that because we are focusing on scheduling. Park Ave. learned how to incorporate vocabulary instructional routines into their lesson plans. That got really rave reviews. And also, how they could incorporate academic discourse into their lesson plans. And then our unified arts teachers had time to plan for an integrated community showcase presentation. That isn't even half of it. So like, we have a lot going on, and we have to work. My colleagues can tell you, it's really hard to juggle the times and make sure that everyone's getting what they need, but we do our best.
Okay, and so in the L department, during the January PD, we continued to work on curriculum development. As you know, we have a new ELD curriculum to ensure our readiness for the upcoming progress reports for our corrective action plan. We're expected to not only use the new programs, but also to develop the curriculum, the use of the ELE curriculum. This involves ensuring that the ELD standards are addressed and planning units and lessons to match the proficiency levels of our students. This work will continue throughout the year, and we anticipate continuing throughout the summer. Our department also engaged in learning about how to increase the home language in the classroom. And we ended up having a very good discussion on the concept of translinguaging, which is, there's growing research on the concept of translinguaging. We always understood before this that bilinguals have the ability to code-switch. And so this is moving beyond code-switching and really understanding that as you are becoming bilingual, you learn a new language, and you're not forgetting what you already learned. And you, not only do you not forget, but you also incorporate your language while you're learning the new language. You use it to leverage to learn the new language. And that's really important for all of our teachers to understand, whether a student is in the ELL classroom during the time with ELL, but also when they're in a regular classroom, receiving general education. So it's just, you know, a concept that we need to continuously understand that we're not asking students to think only in one language or to speak only in one language as they are becoming bilinguals. And I really appreciate that concept because we think of acquisition of a second language. We tend to speak of it in terms of limited English, but at the same time, we should be thinking about it as emerging bilinguals, so not yet fully bilingual, rather than calling something a limitation. So I'm really proud of the department for moving forward with this kind of thinking and really delving deep into these new concepts that inform our instruction.
Thank you. And I'll just briefly talk about the special education training that took place on the 18th. The first thing that we tried to focus on was the transition that we're making to a new platform with Pearson for assessments. So we are moving to a more comprehensive library, and we'll be utilizing what they call a Q-interactive, which is the ability for evaluators to evaluate students utilizing iPads. So it'll be kind of a one-on-one, still in person, but you can also use it remotely in most situations. But that will be for all of our evaluators, school psychologists, the teachers, special ed teachers, our speech and language pathologists, OT and PT. So there's a full array of assessments that are available through this library and platform. So we're really excited about that. But what, we didn't get the iPads in on time to do the full training for dolls. So we're going to be, what we ended up doing was a training for all of the special education teachers who were available or not in other sessions on the newest edition of the Wyatt, which is the Wexler Individual Achievement Test. So the newest version, they were all updated and trained. And for those who were in different sessions, we're going to make arrangements for them to take that at a different time, hopefully before the February break. We, kind of with Title I, we did a lot of work in training teachers in supplemental reading programs that we were able to acquire for, through McGraw. And some of the programs are reading mastery, corrective reading, read to achieve. And so groups of teachers were assigned to whatever module they were going to be utilizing. We had a five-hour module and then two on-demand, two-hour modules. And that was for both special education and Title I teachers. So that was, you know, I think, well-received. The special education staff also were provided with and in-service on Boardmaker. We, Boardmaker is a program that allows us to make tools for communication for students. If you've ever walked into a classroom and seen like a visual schedule or a student with a communication book that has little pictures in it, that's, you know, the PEX, Picture Exchange Communication, that all comes from Boardmaker. And it previously was a kind of a standalone, you know, through a CD. You know, you'd plug it into your computer and you could use it. Now they have a full online suite of Boardmaker that our staff will be able to use. So we purchased a number of licenses for the district, and I actually participated in that training. It was about a two-hour training. We probably could have used a little bit more time because there was so much to it. But it was really well-received, and I think it's going to be very widely used. And then finally, well, the risk assessment, Jill had already mentioned. I was, I led the counselors in a review of our safety and risk assessment practices and protocols. It was a really good session, a good refresher. We have a lot of new counselors on staff, so we were able to go through and do some edits to some of the protocols that we use. And we also had an opportunity to do, touch on a little bit of 504 accommodation training. So that was our day in special ed.
I just want to give a shout-out to our day, the PD day. It takes a lot of time and energy and thought and planning to put together our professional development in the district. So I know all the administrators are very much involved, and we're really trying to provide relevant support for our teaching staff that they can relay on a day-to-day basis. And if we were to step back and be flies on the wall and look at the number of resources and PD that we've been able to provide in this district, it's just simply amazing. I don't think there's another word for it. So I want to thank everybody involved with our continued planning and our moving forward. And thank you for speaking to that level of detail because it's pretty complex, what goes on here. There's a lot of thought processes in place for making sure that no one's left with nothing pertinent to do and that it's useful. So thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you for your updates.
Moving on in my report, I just want to give you an update. I had told you that we had applied for a project-based learning grant for Bartlett High School, and we had two teachers interested in it. We did apply. We were informed that we made it to the interview phase. So we had an interview. Mrs. Neves, Jill Chapdeline, and I participated in that interview. We should find out sometime in February if we will be accepted into Cohort 2 for that project-based learning grant. And in my other updates, I want to let you know that negotiation season is upon us. We are starting negotiations with the teachers. Tomorrow, we will be in this room for a very long interest-based training session with the group. I had hoped to give you some information about our project scope and budget meeting, which was supposed to happen on Monday. That's been pushed back to Thursday. And in a celebratory news, and I know some of you have seen it on the website, our One Goal program that we started with the support of MOFRA, we have had three students who have gotten into colleges, and we kind of highlighted them and pushed that on our website. And we're going to continue with that program. It's successful, and I'm pleased to say that these are some of the Webster Pride events that we need to push out into the community so that they can see what's happening. And there are a lot of those type of things that are happening, and I- And I know that the principals have taken the time to really focus on their websites and make some substantial changes. So I encourage you to take a peek at them so that we can share with the community what's going on. And that concludes my report tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Gogan. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? No? The next item on the agenda is the Business Managers Report. Good evening, Mrs. Perangeli.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm going to keep my report short and sweet tonight. I have a couple of things later on in the agenda. The first item is our School Building Committee update. We had a school building committee meeting held here on Thursday, January 20th. The meeting lasted about two hours long and contained some really good discussion. A big part of that meeting was reviewing the information that was submitted to the state for the end of December for our schematic design submission. We spent a lot of time reviewing the Form 311, which is really outlines our budget for the project moving forward. So this is going to be the topic of our discussion on Thursday with the MSBA. We have a meeting scheduled for an hour and a half that was switched from Monday to Thursday because our former MSBA project manager is no longer there. We were assigned a new one, so they needed some extra time to get caught up on the Webster project and is working currently with our OPM. So we look forward to Thursday to really dig into the budget scope and find out what kind of reimbursement that we're actually going to get into what item areas. So we're looking forward to that meeting. We also had a discussion about getting out there and informing the community and doing a lot of public outreach over the next couple of months. So we are working on a schedule that we will be sharing out very shortly. We firmed up a lot of dates this week, had a lot of communication received back with confirmation. We're still waiting on one or two more dates to confirm, but we did send it to our OPM and our architect. And we hope to share that out, you know, within the next couple of days and start holding those forums. And we are setting up meetings with selectmen, with finance, with parents, with students, with the senior center. We are setting up Saturday meetings to try and accommodate work schedules for people who can't attend during the week that maybe they could attend. We're going to do in-person, we're going to do Zoom. So we're trying to cover the whole, the whole gamut to make sure that, you know, anybody who wants to learn about the project will have a way of finding out about it. Because we want to share the excitement that we've been working on for the past, what, year and a half, two years already?
We do have one parent community forum scheduled for February 9th that has been confirmed. And so that is happening. So we are really excited. And all of the information is going to, is on our website. So we need everyone to start sharing the good news.
So we'll be putting it out there. We have our next meeting scheduled for February 15th. It's a Tuesday. Typically, we meet on a Thursday, but we moved the meeting to Tuesday to accommodate schedules. So it's getting really active and we're going to be really busy over the next couple of months just really talking about this project and sharing the good work that's happened. So we're excited about that. Are there any questions about the building project?
Who's the chair?
Yes, Ms.
Just a suggestion.
Yes.
That when you have meeting dates, maybe you could have them put on the electronic information board on the town hall lawn. So everybody that goes on the main street can see the dates because I know I check it when I go by.
That's a good idea.
Great idea.
And that's a good tip for any school events. So if you're hosting a parent event or something that's coming up, they'll certainly let us put something on that big board. We had done that for the Bartlett High School seniors a couple of years ago. We had utilized that. I think it's Carol Marshon who, who organizes that. So we can help you guys make those connections for any events.
Good idea. Thank you.
Can we have it on the district website, right?
Yes, it will be on the district. We're going to tweet it. We're going to put it on the district websites. I'll ask the town to share it on their websites. I'll reach out onto the local paper to let them know. Maybe they can put in the Times the dates of the public meetings that they can attend. We'll make sure that we're getting it out in as many places as we can because we, we real, we really want to talk about the project and engage the community in the work that we're doing and the future programming that we're looking at, the changes. Any more questions? Okay. And the second item is the Town Administrator Search update. Last meeting, I was here. They were interviewing final contestants. They now have a finalist. They offered the job to Rich LaFon of, he is currently working in Carver as an interim. They are in negotiations. So they have a meeting scheduled for February 1st to work out the contracts and hopefully approve a contract. He has come to us with a lot of experience. He's been a town administrator for 25 years in two locations. He spent a good part of his career in Carver and then he went to Abington, I believe. And then now he is back in the role at Carver as an interim. So it is really exciting to have somebody new on board. I'm encouraged that he is going to be somebody that we will not have an issue working with at all. He has experience. He even has experience with the building project. So I'm looking forward to building a relationship with him and discussing the town finances and overall vision of the community. I don't know if you have anything to add. Mr. Adamopolis was the chair of our search committee and has been actively involved in the process.
I just want to say thank you for nominating me to be on the committee. As Ms. Perangeli said, he does come with a lot of experience. My understanding is since he's coming from an interim role, that within a week or so of him signing his contract, he'll be starting full-time in Webster. So the goal from my understanding is for him to take on the budget and really be involved in that. But as Ms. Perangeli stated, he has a ton of experience dealing with building projects, working through grant writing, and has really just spent his career going back between two towns. So that was something that we took into consideration and showed that he had no issues with any of the school districts out in those two towns. So hopefully it's an easy transition. We can build that relationship and he can keep Webster going the trajectory that the former TA kind of set us on over the last four years.
And we hope to get him right out of the gate. They are meeting on February 1st to approve his contract. And we have also requested to be on the selectmen's agenda to talk about our building project the same night. So hopefully the ink won't even be dry and we'll be, we'll be digging in with our building project and welcoming him to the community. So we look forward to that. And it really was a great process. So thank you again for that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Perangeli.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the committee? No? Well, hearing none, the next item on the agenda is the principal report. Good evening, Mrs. Parmley.
Good evening. How are you?
I'm well. How are you?
I'm great, thank you. So we've been super busy at Park Avenue. Right now we are finishing up and still in the middle with access many different benchmark assessments. We've been involved now with our iReady Math and ELA, our DIBELS. And we're going to be doing our MACE this week as well, which concentrates on the comprehension piece. And access will continue on through the beginning of March. So our boys and girls all over the building are really engaged in being able to show us what they know. And we haven't had a chance to look at all the data yet, but we are seeing and hearing from our teachers that they're very excited, especially about the iReady reading information that's coming through. So we're looking forward to really diving in and looking at that. So we recently, of course, did our math, our MCAS data analysis. And so we really look at the MCAS results as being a totality of all of our teachers, whether they're kindergarten or grade four, we all own those scores and the progress and the successes and the areas that we need to concentrate across the entire school. So we, as an admin team, we modeled a defined protocol with our ILT members, who then went back and facilitated those conversations with their instructional teams. And each team did an item analysis. They looked at the top five areas of deficit that they wanted to really focus in on for both ELA and math. And they just, this week turned in their action steps of how they're going to address that all the way down to kindergarten. And so of course, that has to be developmentally appropriate. So they got very creative of how they were going to try to pull in some of those pieces to support our students in those areas that they knew were needs. So kudos to my ILT team. They are such hard workers and they've done a great job framing the work that they needed to do with their teams. Also, we've just got a lot of work going on with our literacy coaches, both our early grant literacy coach and the Hill. And they've been working closely and consistently with our instructional teams, talking about effective strategies, purposeful planning, getting really in there and helping them with ideas as far as teaching our core literacy program with integrity. They have office hours. They're in the classrooms. They're providing feedback. So they are both outstanding and I believe our teachers are excited about the support that they're getting in that area. Tomorrow we will be having our data meeting and we do have Alex Stout from the Hill, who has created a wonderful protocol that she's going to use with staff, give them some background knowledge as far as sub-testing results and what that looks like to do what they call sub-test mapping, looking at those smaller areas with the assessments that the students took and really trying to, you know, what are their noticing's? What, how can they really address those kind of head-on as far as refining their strategies moving forward? And then at our next staff meeting, we'll be taking that to another level as they begin to create their instructional groupings. So having our literacy coaches there as part of doing that work, as well as our academic interventionists and our reading specialists, Deb Pushes. They're a phenomenal team and we'll all be working together to facilitate that learning piece tomorrow. And so we're looking forward to, you know, what comes out over the next two weeks with our teachers, with their noticing's and understandings. And then finally, as you know, we talk about our character trait each month. This month it was resilience, the ability to bounce back after a difficult situation. And our kids go with strong determination. And our students have really been displaying that as they've made it through all these different assessments, as well as perseverance, and we're very proud of them and our staff as well. Are there any questions?
To put my microphone on. It doesn't sound like there are any questions, but thank you for your updates, Mrs. Parmley.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the Student Representative Update. Good evening, Colin.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to start it off with an update on sports. Like Coach Prano said earlier, fans are now allowed back into the games. Very exciting. Personally, I love when the crowd is always packed. Makes it much better to play. Quick record update, both the boys and girls basketball teams are currently five and six. The girls are playing right now. Hopefully they can make that six and six. And the track, I believe they are two and one. Most of the people on the track team aren't certain. I don't know how tracks scored, so I can't help on that situation either. But everything's going very nicely. Most of the kids that were out with COVID are now back. We're seeing a good decrease in people out with COVID on sports teams. So that's always good, too. And also in the school too, like Superintendent Gogan was saying, the attendance is increasing each day and the school's feeling more filled and filled. Much better atmosphere. Obviously it's better when everyone's back. It feels like normal. And a couple other things. Couple AP classes had mock exams that I guess went very smoothly. I fortunately did not have to take any. That did not last that long. And also the second semester has just started and half-year classes have switched and most of the students are finding their new classes very smoothly and everything's going great. And any questions? That's all I have for tonight.
Anyone have any questions for Colin? Everything else going okay, Colin?
Yes.
It's been a strange year.
It's been a very strange year. Indeed, yes.
Okay. Well, look forward to seeing you on the court.
Thank you.
The, now, next on the agenda is old business, but we're actually going to take things a little bit out of order. So the first item that we're going to take care of under old business is the FY23 budget update. Good evening again, Mrs. Perangeli. Yeah? Dr. Gogan, you're going to lead us?
Thank you. Well, we know that some of you weren't here at the last meeting. So we have just a brief overview of the budget that we want to share with you and to collect any feedback on, on the budget. So we always start with our vision and mission statement, which we believe we live and breathe every single day. Our goal is to provide a quality education and a safe environment for all our students and to empower them to be successful, responsible, productive citizens in an ever-changing global, global world. Our goals really are maintaining a safe and engaging environment. I think a lot of our PD is aligned to that. It's student discourse and how to make sure our courses are relevant to real life. We're supporting teachers with on-grade-levels supports, curriculum, materials, and using data to inform our practices. We are really pushing that using valid data. And the reason we're doing all of those things is to really make sure that we are providing equitable access to high-level learning and varied opportunities to all of our students so they can grow. Our support for our students and families are tremendous. I think all of our students having a one-to-one device. Some of the new hires that we've made have been certainly focused on student growth. We've hired a re-engagement specialist. We've hired additional counselors. We've hired additional nursing assistants. We're still seeking additional L teachers. We have put academic interventionists at Bartlett. We have made sure there were kindergarten paraprofessionals in all K-classes. We've hired additional special education teachers. We've hired additional ABA paraprofessionals. We have building-based substitutes. We hired an additional BCBA and an innovation pathways consultant. And I think it's important to note that the ESAR funds were used to fund most of this. And there's a combination of things going on, sped grants and LEA. And we continue to be resourceful with what we're putting in place and we're aligning what we're doing, whether that's new hires or new curriculum, to the data, to what our student population data is telling us that we need to do next. Our budget process is way more complex than a list of dates. There are multiple meetings that happen. Principals go back and work with their ILTs, their school councils. They come back. Mrs. Perangeli and I meet individually with principals to go over priorities. Then we meet as a district leadership team to really look at the system of structures that we have in place and what needs to be prioritized. And that's how the first draft of the budget comes to the school committee. So we are here on, I guess there's an error in there, January 25th, not January 22nd, with the second draft of the proposed FY23 budget. And we will be asking the school committee to have their final review at the next school committee meeting with a vote so that we can proceed to do our work that we do collaboratively with the town of Webster. A public hearing is scheduled on April 12th. So that is usually in conjunction with our school committee meeting. We do a public hearing mid, in the middle of the meeting, we stop, we do the public hearing. And then the annual town vote is on May 9th. Our budget goals are similar to what you've already heard me say. And this is a historical view of our budget. Mrs. Perangeli, do you want to speak a little bit about the flow of that increase-decrease?
Sure. So from FY20 to FY21, we actually saw a decrease in our budget. We worked collaboratively with the town and we also returned approximately $400,000 to $500,000. We've been returning money in good faith for the past couple of years. When there's excess funds or we have savings throughout the year, we have typically been returning that to the town. So FY22, we did see a 3.49% increase in our budget.
So the first budget draft in front of you is $23,462,390. So, the first budget draft in front of you is $23,462,394, which represents a 4.37% increase. There are justifications in your line-item budget book, also new this year, is a narrative about the budget for the community. And that narrative has been translated into multiple languages. The justifications for each of these positions are in the back of that book or in the front of that book. And they are a .5, part-time, year-round administrative assistant for Park Avenue Elementary School, a dean at the Webster Middle School, a paraprofessional at the Webster Middle School to not serve as a specialist, but to make sure that the library is kept up and open and teachers are utilizing it. And at Bartlett High School, a STEM teacher to help us with the innovative pathways growth. And a special education teacher. And at the district, a full-time occupational therapist and a new position coordinator of equity and inclusion or equity and compliance. The title is really different, a different role than what Mrs. Barris or Dr. Mackay does in terms of compliance. It's more of a coordinator to work with principals and teachers to ensure that our practices in our school district are providing equitable access to our students. Things like scheduling or making sure that we have a variety of extracurricular activities, such as the Real Madrid for certain subgroups. So, to really work more on that day-to-day implementation of the equitable practices that we are expecting everyone to follow. And many districts are adding that type of role into their budgets. So, it's something that's new. We wanted to be cognizant of making some shifts from the positions that were funded strictly by ESAR, that we know that we're going to need. And so, some of those shifts into the local budget will be the grounds, .4 of the grounds. Keeper, a technology staff who's in existence, who's in our budget now, but it was funded through ESAR. And one of the L teachers at Bartlett High School and a nurse assistant at Park Ave. Here's a historical view of our enrollment. As you can see, there's been a slight decline in our enrollment over the years. I think it's important to point out that even though we have had a slight decline, we have certainly increased our staffing to support the various and diverse needs of our student population, which is there before you, the comparison of our district to the state. Again, I know I use this slide a lot, but I think it speaks to our obligation to the students that we serve. We have a much higher percentage of special education students than the state average. We have a much higher percentage of high-need students and economically disadvantaged students than the state average. And we are seeing an increasing growth in our English-language learners and students whose first language is not English. I, and I can just say that over the last two weeks, we have had probably 10 new enrollments, 12 new enrollments. And out of those, eight students are coming from different countries where they are not speaking any English. So, those challenges, we have to accommodate. So, thus, you'll see, that's why you're seeing an additional L teacher. And the complexities of adding staff to support students on a deeper look is tied to our schedule. So, we have to actually have the time to service students and the space. So, we are knee-deep as a district leadership team in trying to, right now, in January, figure out what the schedule's going to be for next year so that we can appropriately make sure that students are getting serviced and we can hit the ground running on day one. So, want to do that?
Sure. This is an overall breakdown of our budget. Salaries make up 80.34% of our budget. Out of district, tuitions is 7%, 7.16%, which represents 33 students. Maintenance is 7.86% of our budget. This includes all of maintenance and salaries is included in that. And then if we were just to pull out special ed as a whole throughout the district, that makes up about 30% of our budget. So, this is only reflecting local funds, it doesn't take into account any circuit breaker. Which leads us to this slide, we take a look at our circuit breaker funds. We have always tried to carry over one full year of circuit breaker to help us offset the budget in the next year. We have been able to do that. So, I anticipate carrying all over our circuit breaker this year of FY22 into '23. We use up 21 because you're only allowed to carry over one year of circuit breaker. So, we have offset our budget with our FY22 circuit breaker amount of $688,000. That's offset of, to our tuition. We have also worked on school choice. This money is for kids that are school choicing in our district. We utilize that, we have set goals to use that for technology. It's, in the past, it's been used for technology and to offset our ABA tutors in special education. Last year in '21, we didn't need to use it. So, if there are savings in our budget, this is the one area that I will try not to touch and carry over, will allow us to use in the next year as a little, in case something pops up or we need something. So, we have budgeted $200,000 to use in FY22. And I budgeted $200,000 for FY23 to offset. But as you can see, if you look at the trend of our school choice money, this is, this is not a permanent thing that we'll be able to use, you know, moving forward for years to come. As our school choice money, we have less and less students coming into Webster than we have going out. So, this is not a fund that we can rely on offsetting our budget for years to come.
And that's a snapshot of the budget that we presented. And we are happy to answer any questions that you may have or take on any suggestions that you may have.
I'll just add to that, that we still don't have revenue numbers from the state. We hope to get them tomorrow. I know there's been a little discussion. The lieutenant governor had just released some information that they put in a 2.7% increase in local aid, unrestricted government aid on the town side, but they did not release any Chapter 70 money yet. So, I'm not sure if that's an indication as to what we can expect on our side for Chapter 70. As you know, our Chapter 70 revenue is driven by our enrollment. And as you can see, our enrollment, you know, changed maybe 12, 15 kids from last year. So, I'm not expecting any major increases in our Chapter 70 fund. I'm hoping we'll get a little bit more than we got last year, which was the minimum contribution. That's all we received last year. But we do have a few more students. So, until we know what our overall revenue is, you know, then we'll really sit down and start having those conversations with the town about revenue and what does it look like as a community as a whole? Because the town is just working on their budget now, I haven't, haven't seen what they're looking for on the town side.
Thanks, Mrs. Perangeli. Just a question about school choice, the numbers, I understand the $200,000 is what's budgeted for this year and then what we forecast for next year. These other numbers under the expense column, is that what we actually paid out? There are some years we didn't pay any out?
Yes. So, we had a savings in 2021 where I didn't need to spend.
We took in and we didn't expend.
Right. Knowing that down the road, we might need it because we had a surplus in our budget of 2021.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions or comments from the committee?
To the chair.
Yes.
The 4.37, does that include just school-side expenses or does that include some of the shared expenses between the school and the town?
It's just school-side expenses. The only expense that's in our budget that we share with the town is our school resource officer. Everything else is school.
Okay. And the town hasn't given us any idea on their budget yet?
No. They've just started working and having their department meetings in January, so they're just developing their budget. I think they were waiting for their new town administrator to come on board before they got into it. We'll have a, like I said, revenue, I'm hoping to have a better idea tomorrow as to what we're going to be looking at as far as a community where we stand with revenue increases. But I have not had any explanation from the town as to where their budget is going.
Did we already approve free cash? Or is that coming up in May?
That's coming up in May. And I know we did receive, I want to say, $4 million in free cash back, 4-point-something. I know they're outlining a plan, PNET, to put some in OPEB and to cover some other.
Stabilization.
Stabilization accounts, but we haven't talked about using that to offset any budgets.
Thank you.
Just another question, I feel like budget season is the time to ask all these questions. Building principals and folks have been asked what their needs are at the schools with regard to whether it's extracurricular activities, uniforms, all the things that we sometimes hear about after we've already completed our budgeting process.
That's part of our budget process. So, we, we ask for that during, so we know what we need to budget. So, that's coming, kind of the one-on-one meetings that we have with our building principals. They're going back, I met with every ILT this year at the beginning of our budget season, talked about our process, making sure they're, they know, you know, what they're asking for. Because, you know, I want them to understand, you know, when it comes to March and they say, "Well, we don't have any money." I'm saying, "Yes, you do, this is what you have to budget, you need to tell us what you need."
Right.
We're not mind-readers. So, I know the principals have those conversations with their teams and they bring it back to us, tell us what we need.
Okay, that sounds good. And I have to ask about the track at Bartlett. Well, what's, is there anything that we need to talk about budgetarily regarding the track? Or is that something that we're able to handle with the building renovation?
That is our hope, we haven't done anything with it. And a lot of the mechanical here, we've kind of just been in a holding pattern, find out what's going to happen with our project. So, hopefully, by June, we're really going to know in which direction we're headed.
Okay. And lastly, sorry, I'm a big fan of libraries for little, especially our youngest learners. And I know we have a library at Park Ave. It's not currently one of the Unified Arts that they're experiencing. Is that budget-related or is that, you know, I know we integrated the social-emotional learning and maybe this isn't the right context and I apologize, but do you mind if I ask about that?
Go ahead.
So, at this time, we are actually using that space for multiple opportunities to instruct children because we are out of space, believe it or not, at Park Avenue. So, our academic interventionists support students in there, our entire STEAM class. Mrs. Jeffers does all of her instruction in there as well. We also have Mrs. Cos, who works out of there. So, at this time, because we don't have additional spaces, we needed to use it for this and be very creative to still be able to use it for professional development as well as our staff meetings. So, at this point, I don't believe it's on the docket because, you know, we need to really see how next year rolls out. However, I will say that bringing in the adjustment counselors to be able to do one of our UA's time is, has been outstanding because everybody's getting that same messaging, using our Second Step program and they've done a phenomenal job. So, but I would like in the future, definitely, to be able to reinstate. At this time, though, I just don't think that we can realistically do it with the space that we have and the needs of the building.
One thing we are looking at potentially is modular units because we are busting out of the seams over at Park Avenue. So, I think we all prioritize the use of a library, but we've had to make other decisions based on different things. So, I think in the future, that's something that we would aim to build back into the budgets. Certainly, with the renovation project at Bartlett High School, we're going to need a media center librarian type of person to help utilize the maker space that we're going to build in the media center. I know that the library was very active prior to us cutting the librarian due to COVID, really. And the benefits of the counselors coming into the classrooms and connecting with every student, I think we've really seen that as something that we want to extend even into the high school at some level because it happens at the middle and it happens at the elementary school. But that, make sure that all kids are getting that social-emotional curriculum and support is something that is a goal of ours as well.
I agree that the social-emotional learning, you know, is really important. I just, you know, wouldn't want it to replace library or something like that. I think, just from my own experience, I know it can be exciting to go and choose a new book, even if you have a bunch of books at home, which not all kids do. Choosing a new book and taking it home really inspires a child to want to read, so, but I understand.
We really see the budget as an opportunity to make those kind of changes.
Right.
And I think Park Ave's a little different with the space constraints right now. You know, although the population has decreased a little bit, there's a lot more staff there and specific staff that need to work either in small groups or with students. And we just don't have that many classrooms. So, we're working on something to sort of free that up, but nothing's finalized yet.
Okay, thanks. That's all of my questions. Anyone else?
To the chair.
Yes, Ms. Mellett.
Because I see your importance of reading and getting those books in the classroom, I'm wondering if the idea of what used to be done at the old Park Ave, before they had a library, was they had someone who brought in books on a cart and visited classrooms with books on a cart for children to experience and to take. Because you have all those books just sitting there. And it might be a good idea to revert back to the old at the time, right now, to get some of those books into the classroom. They would just have a rolling cart.
Mm-hmm, that makes sense.
Come in.
Yeah. It's a great parent-volunteer activity if you had parents that could volunteer.
Absolutely, I agree. I think, you know, this was all kind of initiated originally because of our COVID safety protocols and not being able to, to be in close proximity as well as, at that time, touching multiple items by multiple people. But that is a wonderful idea and I would love to see that implemented. Thank you.
Thank you. Look forward to hearing more about it. Great, thanks.
We're also, I have a purchase order in progress right now for a packet of culturally responsive books for every classroom from K to 8. And, and then they, some of them are in Spanish for some Spanish families. But they're all about celebrating, you know, one of the big responsibilities of ours is to ensure that our curriculum, but not only the curriculum resources, but any supplemental resources are culturally responsive. And so, through Scholastic, we'll be purchasing these packets. Every packet is 50 books. And so, we thought that every classroom could also have like a built-in library within their classroom of these books that, and the goal of that isn't necessarily for instruction, but it's family engagement. So, that this is like a classroom library that kids can take books home and come back with them. And in the process, we're celebrating diversity and cultural responsiveness across all of our families. And there's another, another program that we'll be getting, I think most of this is free because I won this at our conference. Books about, one of the titles is "Celebrating Black Boys" and the other one is "Celebrating Girls in STEAM." And so, again, different ways to increase our cultural proficiency and build that information within classrooms so that they can use for within classroom libraries.
That's great news, thanks. So, the classroom libraries in conjunction with the books that we already have being put back into rotation, sounds like a win. that we already have being put back into rotation, sounds like a win. Good deal. Thank you. I don't have any further questions.
Any other comments for the budget? Thank you. Have a good night, you guys. Thank you for staying.
Mrs. Perengeli, do you need a vote?
We will be looking for a vote at our next meeting in February, so we'll come back again after we have budget numbers. I don't know if there's any feedback, but you know, we'll look for feedback at our next meeting. And if there's any changes, then we would approve that budget to send downtown.
Okay.
We have to send, it's a working progress. Our budget is a working progress, the town meeting, but we do officially have to send a copy of the budget down to the town by February 28th. So we'll be looking for an approval, but that doesn't mean we can't change it.
Right.
Okay.
Even up through the public hearing, where the purpose of the public hearing that we hold is to get, gather that feedback.
Great, thank you.
Do we have our tri-meeting before or after our public hearing?
It was, I thought it was on the books from March. That's the date I've been trying to narrow down for our building committee also. Well, that was a date we have on the calendar, but I'm not sure if that's the date the town administrator had on his budget.
Okay.
I brought it up with him a couple of times and I was looking for that confirmation and I haven't gotten it yet. So we'll be coming up.
But I'd hold March 16th.
Okay, better.
Just in case.
In my calendar.
No?
But that's okay.
That's the floor board meeting.
That's what we have.
Okay. All right. We'll let you know.
I'll release it for now. Thank you. Okay.
We promise it won't be St. Patty's Day.
Okay, that sounds good. All right. So as I indicated earlier, we're taking some of our items under old business out of order. The next item that we're going to be talking about is the Park Avenue Elementary School Improvement Plan update. Hello again, Mrs. Parmley.
Hello. You're going to get tired of hearing from me.
Not a chance.
Thank you. So I'm going to try to move through this as quickly as possible just because there is a lot of information, but feel free to jump in with questions as I move along. I don't mean to cut you off. I'll just keep moving otherwise. So as we look at our school improvement plan, just to frame this, this is a collaborative work between the admin team, our teachers and our school council. So I do frame the work because it needs to come under our initiatives of who we are as a district and our focus areas. However, they, this is presented multiple times to our ILT who then go back and share it with their teams. We ask for feedback. We ask for their thoughts, anything that they feel like should be included in order to support the initiatives. So this is the SIP that we're working under currently. We're going to be very quickly moving in the next couple of months in with our school council and beginning to look at next year's SIP so that it's created before we move into the, the new fall. So on the objective one, we were talking about, it's all about student achievement and ensuring access to tier one high-quality instruction as well, as well as tier two, being able to support students at all learning levels. So starting, you know, I'm not going to read this word for word. However, starting in September, of course, we had lots of training, we had lots of PD, our district literacy team did a lot of work. We have our wonders trainers and consultants who created lesson plans for our, for our staff to be able to really focus and refine our instructional teaching. A master schedule was created. We held CPTs in order to go over our data findings and be able to review everything we needed to do so that we were really streamlining and focusing with a laser focus, the work that we needed to do this year. So we moved through that through September and through November. Coming up to this point right here, we've just recently had some PD around the heart word strategy, which is around sight words in a very different way that's hands-on, engaging, multisensory, as well as some foundations training for our students. We've had CPT scheduled meetings in conjunction with our literacy consultants, academic interventionists, and our tier two instructional block has been, of course, supported by our academic interventionists. And we are having those blocks, grades K through four. And then as we move into one, two, again, looking at all of our, at the beginning of the year, we did lots of baseline assessments, words their way, I-ready, dibbles, because what we needed to do was to make sure that we had data-driven instructional grouping so that we were meeting kids where they were and being very refined again at our focus of what we needed to do in order to help students and to move them along. As we moved in, we began to start a tier two block. We started our walk to read in grades three and four in which students were, based on those instructional groupings, were moving into classrooms for specific targeted explicit instruction. So that's been happening. The teachers are excited about, about it, grades three and four. They plan. It's now, I'm also reflected in their purposeful planning, just their lesson plans as a whole. So it's added another piece that we can go in and we can look at and we can see exactly what they're doing, what their, their target is based on the common assessments that they're doing and any of our benchmark assessments up to this point, which we're getting ready now to shift and do that again with the mid-year. Let's see here, as we get to one, three, we redesigned the master schedule so that we made sure that there was uninterrupted tier one core instruction. We moved into a tier two, we built in a tier two reading block so that we could have designated focus areas that would begin right off the bat in order to again have data-driven support. So for our K to two students, we initially are doing all foundations to give them that base, knowing that students were lacking in some foundational skills. And then our grades three and fours, grades three and four, we did do the walk to read so that we could launch that. So that's in place. As of right now, we've made a couple of minor tweaks to the master schedule, taking in feedback from teachers in order to smooth the process, nothing major, but enough to where teachers not only had voice in it, but that they felt good about being able to maybe to close some areas that they had concerns about. So right now, that seems to be working really well and that was with the consult with the district literacy team. One, four, this is a combination of where we had our early grant literacy team. We are in year two. Last year, we did a lot of work. It was all, you know, via Zoom, but our consultant worked closely with our teachers on a consistent basis. So we're continuing on this year. Her name is Jean Wolfe and she is fantastic. She has been having office hours. She goes in, she does observations, she meets with teachers one-to-one, she meets with CPTs. During this time, we also, Dr. Mackay and I met with our literacy director from DESI, Tracy Martineau, as we talked about our grant goals and the action steps to make sure that we were including all grant components. As of to, as of December, our, the Park Avenue administration and district directors, we've met with our consultants. We actually meet once a week for debrief with each consultant at two different times. So Patty and Jill come over to Park Avenue and we meet with the consultants and really have a, just a strong conversation face-to-face. How's it going? How did the week go? What are some areas we need to do in order to support our teachers? So that's been really good for consistent support. Objective two was all about culture and climate and continuing on with our safe and supportive learning environment because we know that that directly impacts student achievement. So just this year, we continued on again with what has always been done at Park Ave where our, our counselors do a wonderful job with our PBIS expectations at the direct locations, creating instructional videos for the teachers to use as a review. We have re-implemented our compass program, giving kids a safe and supportive measure. Right now, our compass facilitator actually provides data to us on a weekly basis. And the work that she'll be doing tomorrow, she's going to take all of that cumulative data up to this point at the mid-year point. And she's going to be looking for trends and patterns, looking, what's working, what's not, what kind of breaks are they taking and how is that going? Because we want to make sure it's effective. Moving on to two, two, we continued on with our character celebrations, our golden plunger, that's important, golden plunger, golden dustpan award, instilling school pride and the kids love that and are very focused and invested in making sure that they get that award. Our UA teachers continue to lead a weekly recognition for our students who get the, the character, you know, the character trait of the month, so proud of them, or each week. And so they move out throughout a team, they use their creative, creativity. Each one takes a rotation of what they're going to do and how they're going to do it. They take a group photo, they do the certificate and it's a big deal. And as we moved into December, we also added, over the last couple of months, our, back in our student of the month family recognition. It used to be a breakfast. Right now, we're limited on being able to do that because of, you know, the industry with trucking and supplies and things like that. So we do it on a much smaller scale, but the families are coming in, they're excited, they're able to be a part as we recognize their students and really applaud their hard work. For two, three, as we started off the year, we talked a lot about what the, the growth mindset again was all about. We, I try to build that up through our Sunday, our Sunday night emails, through any kind of messaging, anytime I can to just encourage staff, not only to encourage the growth mindset within the children, but to also hold that mindset for themselves personally of who they are as a professional and just continuing to push that we're always going to get better at what we do. So as we moved into all the way through December, if you go through the building, you'll see within the classrooms or in the hallways, you'll see bulletin boards, you'll see ways that teachers are really bringing in that growth mindset and tapping into the fact that if a child doesn't know something, it's just, they don't know it yet. And understanding that with the tools that they need to be given, which we give them as educators, that they will get there and that we support them and that with their effective effort and with our support that they can reach that. It's not like they can't do it and they'll never do it. We believe they can do it regardless. Objective three was developing an instructional leadership team. You know, we do that each year. Their role is actively leading their colleagues and improving teaching and learning and monitoring the effectiveness of research-based programs, which all of our core programs are, and using highly effective best practices. So starting with three, one, the ILT was established and we had our, we had our monthly ILT meetings, which we do meet twice a month. We talked about norms, expectations. We reviewed the beginning of the year I-ready data. Let's see here. We started to, then incorporate our first set of action steps around the literacy reset and looking at the lesson plans and also being able to take, taking the time to really listen to teachers and their glows and grows, the areas that they were doing well in and the areas that they wanted more support in. As that moved into December, we've now reviewed the MCAS, dibbles, I-ready data. We had done it through the data cohort, through that phenomenal presentation that our district directors and our superintendent did for the district. So we were able to take the time as an ILT and go back through that as well with them, but also then to look at it again with their teams. So that's been really effective. It brought up a lot of wonderings. It brought a lot of aha moments. And so that was a really valuable, that was valuable information for us to consider. Let's see here, as we move into three, two, we started off the year by looking, reviewing common assessments for consistent data points. This was facilitated by our ILT members. Again, the ILT members have really stepped up. It's that distributive leadership where they step up and step in to support their teams. And they've done a phenomenal job along with our academic interventionists. Our academic interventionists, I think I had reported back on this at some point, that they did an entire presentation around our dibbles data. We've continued to work closely with the C, the CPTs and in collaboration with the admin. But I have to tell you, the ILT members are the ones doing the work. Like we go over defined protocols, but they get in there and they work with their teams and they develop steps together and they build a really strong rapport. They, they've really, the leadership that they're displaying is really to be commended. And then as we move into the December update, continuing on with the CPTs for the literacy consultants, the literacy consultants are now joining our CPTs every single week. And I have to give a lot of kudos to our teachers because what they're realizing is, is we didn't take something away from them, we've added something to them. So we've provided them the support. They have been wanting some support around lesson planning with the wonders. And so now they're getting it every CPT, the wonders consultant, not the wonders consultant, my, my mistake. The literacy consultants are jumping in there and providing and giving them feedback and helping them, you know, if they want to design, how to look at it, how do they pull in the small group. So really, it's supporting all the work that we're doing. And three, three, almost done. As we started the year, those are all of our core programs, wonders, Hegarty, Ready Math, I-Ready, they were all launched. We tweaked as we needed to, as we listened to teacher feedback. There were pieces that we did not need to repeat because in, in one of our programs, we had phonemic awareness, but we were already addressing it through the Hegarty that was very multisensory. And so we listened to the teacher feedback on that and stuck with the Hegarty. And there, if you go into the room, the teachers are excited about it and the kids are excited about it and they know what they're doing. It's very multisensory. And then moving into December, as we, as we're finishing up, as we just finished up the last month, expectations again were reviewed with both the district literacy team and the grade level teams through our scheduled CPT times, through our office hours and responses to the observations that we're giving our teachers through the literacy consultants and the feedback. Our ILT members supported our building-based PD in partnership with our early link, early grant literacy. Ooh, I did that quickly. So there's a lot going on, but a lot of great stuff going on. And I have to say, it's been a year of growth. And the pieces with the growth is everything has been so data-driven. And so it's black and white. It's right there. We've got everything. You know, data doesn't lie and it helps us to know what we need to do to make instructional decisions that are needed to help our kids achieve. So that's it. Are there any questions?
I would just like to congratulate you and the staff for your persistence, for your hard work, for your focus with taking the district goals into the school improvement plan and providing the ongoing support, but keeping things moving forward. I think your teachers have done a remarkable job with using data and then implementing what they're finding and still being creative and still able to have autonomy with the structures that we've put in place to ensure grade level tier one instruction is moving forward. So kudos to everyone at Park Ave and thank you for that very comprehensive report. I understood every single thing you said. So nice work.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Through the chair.
Yes, Ms. Mallett.
Not a question, but a comment.
Sure.
Because I did read all this. Brought me back. I am very impressed with the variety of strategies and interventions that have been used to address your, the goals of the school. And I think they can only lead to a lot of success.
Thank you. Thank you. I will absolutely communicate that to the staff. I agree with you. And we're excited to see as the year continues on. I know our teachers have worked incredibly hard. And so I know that's going to pay benefits because they've really invested. So thank you.
Yeah, that's clear. This is, you know, very exciting. I just remain really interested to see how this progresses with this level of focus and determination. So great job. And I have to ask, what's the golden plunger and the golden dustpan?
So the golden plunger outside each of the bathrooms on each level, there's a little hook and we have a golden. It's a plunger that's been, you know, sprayed gold. And so each night, the custodians determine who did a better job at keeping those bathrooms looking good, so that there's not trash all over it. Nobody tells the kids what they need to do. This is instilling pride. So they drop a paper towel on the floor, they pick it up and throw it away. So they, they are taking care of it. So each day, I get a list for the announcements and I will read out who won, the girls or the boys, and it's very competitive, on either floor. And then every classroom has outside their door a hook and that's where we have the golden dustpan award. And that is the winning classroom per grade level who the custodians feel like they've done a phenomenal job keeping their floors picked up. They don't have a mess anywhere. And again, instilling school pride. And then the one who earns it the most over each month, that group gets an extra recess. That's a big deal, big deal. But it, it's fun, you know, it's really, it's not for prizes. It's because this is who we are at Park Avenue. We have Park Avenue pride and it's not because I'm going to give you a prize, but it's because this is who we are and these are the expectations. And if you raise the bar, kids always step up. They always step up and we're so proud of them.
So it just sounds like it's an opportunity for everybody to take ownership of their own corner of the world and clean up after themselves.
Oh, I like the way you described that. Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the committee? Thank you, Mrs. Parmley, for your very detailed updates and report.
Thank you.
Very exciting things going on at Park Avenue.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the COVID protocols update. Dr. Gogan?
Thank you. As you may or may not know, on January 18th, the governor and the commissioner came out and announced that districts would be receiving at-home tests for staff and at-home tests for students and that schools no longer had to do contact tracing. The tests for the staff were supposed to roll in sometime this week. We did receive an email about them, but we do not have the tests. And for the students, they'll be coming in on the week of January 31st. So the Webster School COVID Leadership Team meets weekly to, every Tuesday and decided that we were and decided that we were going to change our protocols. We were going to go with the, you can reduce the quarantine and isolation period. If you're able to, return to school on day six without any fever or any medication or any worsened symptoms. And there will be no more contact tracing. That was stopped. And because, and the test and stay program was going to end as well. So we pushed out that information to our families, put it on our website. Our athletic director is involved in some of our COVID meetings, and we're waiting for those tests, and we will distribute them and proceed. And as you can see, we did, we are seeing a slight decline, so I think our timing was, is good. Our COVID dashboard data has been updated. This week is not listed on here, because it was just completed today. So last week, the week of January 12th through 18th, we had 113 students with COVID and 20 staff. This week, January 19th to today, we are down to 99 students and nine staff. So that is our COVID update.
Thank you, Dr. Gogan.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions or comments from the committee about the COVID protocols update?
Through the chair.
Yes.
Do you, do you anticipate that a lot of families are going to opt into this? Or are we just kind of over it?
In order to get the tests, you have to fill out a form, and so we will see, once we get that form. I think some people will take advantage of it. I do. Same with staff. They have to fill out a permission slip form to get the tests. My prediction, my personal prediction, I probably shouldn't say this out loud, but I think that we're going to, by the end of the year, not be wearing masks.
And I know that there's a cost associated with this, but will the information be printed and sent home to families? I wonder about.
The nurses have already done that, the permission slips. So at different schools.
I didn't know if you could only access it on the website.
So the nurses actually spoke to me about that. I think the elementary already has sent some home. And sometimes things don't go home until a Friday at certain schools. And the high school is even going to print them out and send them out to students so that we have multiple ways for parents to access that. It is on our website. The schools have pushed out the information. And I think as we, once we get the kits, that there'll be continued communication about how to, how to get them.
And will there still be a COVID dashboard?
Yes. I think yes. I think it's important that we're transparent with what's going on. I want to see it go all the way down to zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments about this from the committee? No? Okay. The next item on the agenda is the FY '22 Quarter Two Budget Update. Mrs. Prangeli?
Thank you. So in your packet, you should have a copy of the budget that I ran on January 21st, I believe it was. We are on target. I don't see any real areas of concern in the budget. I'm not going to go through page by page unless you really want me to. I'm happy to do it. You know, nothing would make me happier than to talk about budget. But I'm sure you don't want to listen through line by line. I did some quick math. If we're looking at salary lines, teachers should be at about 39%. Weekly wages, weekly people are at about 55%, and 39% are at about 49%. If you're curious where we are at, I can just give you an example. If you look at the first page, Park Ave, and you were to look at a teacher's salary line, it's at 39%. That means we're right on target in that line. That's how we kind of average it out. There is nothing really glaring and jumping out at me. There were a couple lines. I know there was a line at the high school that I questioned. It was a tutoring line for home and hospital. We do have a couple of students being tutored because of health reasons, so that line is over budget. And we expect that to continue throughout the year. There is also a tuition line at the district level, which is a regular ed tuition line. Some funds were encumbered, because we were anticipating a student going out. That student hasn't been placed yet. And I just found out that the student might not be coming here after all. So I would unencumber that, and it would go back into the budget, and we would be in good shape there. Does anybody have any questions in regards to the budget?
I do not. Does anyone else have any questions about our current situation in the budget?
Right. Please feel free to reach out to me at any time if you, if questions pop up.
Thank you, Mrs. Prangeli. That's everything under old business, even though we took it a little bit out of order. And now, under new business, the next item on the agenda is the Approval of COVID Safety Protocols Memorandum of Agreement with the Webster Educators Association.
Thank you. We had an existing memorandum, memorandum of understanding with the teachers' union with all of our COVID safety protocols. Given the recent changes, we, I met with the union president to go over the updates with going to the five days or on day six. And we put together a new memorandum of understanding with the current protocols that we're using. And in this memorandum of understanding, it does state, if things change again, it's not necessary for another memorandum of understanding. So this is just to state that. And Mrs. Nassis has signed that memorandum of understanding, and it is before you for a school committee vote and approval.
Thank you, Dr. Gogan.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the COVID Safety Protocols Memorandum of Agreement with the Webster Educators Association.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the acceptance of a donation from the Knights of Columbus in Putnam, Connecticut. It's four winter coats.
They donated four winter coats to the Park Avenue preschool, and we would like to publicly thank them for that donation and ask you to kindly accept that in-kind donation.
Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept this donation.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you to the Knights of Columbus of Putnam for their generosity. And the next item on the agenda is the Approval of a Three-Year Electrical Contract.
Thank you. It's actually going to be a two-year contract, and it's going to be for Park Ave Elementary. It's not for Webster Middle School or Bartlett High School. We were doing two contracts simultaneously. Typically, I don't have to bring contracts for your approval. The company is asking that the school board approve, just for their own purposes. They had, in the past, they had people who signed contracts who weren't procurement officials. And so they didn't really have the authority to sign a contract. And then a problem came up with the contract, and the company couldn't get paid because the school board wouldn't authorize the payment, because the person who signed on behalf of the school board was not an authorized official. So now the company, it just asks any, anytime. They deal with the community. They're looking for approval from the school board for the contract. So I did sign the contract. What this is, is it's a two-year electrical contract. We work with competitive energy. They are part of our French River Co-op. They work on behalf of the co-op for us. They monitor electricity and gas and utilities for about 10 to 15 of the surrounding towns. Our middle school and high school are on a three-year contract that expires in '25. When Park Ave came online, they were off-cycle from the middle school and the high school. So our goal has been to get them back on the same cycle, because you're going to get your better pricing when you're going out for all of that usage at once. We haven't done it until now, because at the timing of the bids, when we could do that, utility cost was high, and we didn't want to jump in. The market's been pretty volatile, and they've been watching. It was good timing for us to sign a new contract in December. So this is a two-year contract. It goes from '23 to '25. You have this in your packet. I thought you might like to look at that. Really, what it does is, on the first page, is it outlines your usage and what you currently have. And then they give you an outline of what the bidding is and what you're paying for. They usually give us three options. They usually give us a 12-month, a 24-month, and a 36-month option to look at. My goal was to get us in line with the middle and high school, so I was looking at a two-year option. So by quotes, we look at an all-inclusive, so that way the rates are always a set rate. At two years, we are seeing some savings over the contract of this in the amount of $3,200. So that's good. Our prices are going down here in the market. We have seen very, we have been very fortunate in timing with our utilities, especially our electric, in seeing good rates. So I am happy to enter into this contract, and I'm looking for the school committee's approval to enter into a two-year contract with entry starting in '23 and ending '25 for Park Ave.
Thank you, Mrs. Prangeli.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the committee? So hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve a two-year electrical contract for Park Avenue Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Number eight.
Yes.
Number eight.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you for your work on getting us in alignment and getting us the best possible rate. And then the next item on the agenda is the Review Transfer Signing of Orenz, Bills, Payroll, and Vouchers. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion and two enthusiastic seconds. Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Meeting adjourned. Good evening, everyone.